I'm not Billy Gilmore. I was elected moderator of this meeting this morning. And so we'll resume the meeting. The first order of business is...
Speak right into the mic.
Yeah. Speak right into the mic, how's that? We've announced the results of the elections. There were sixty-eight ballots cast for selectmen, John Wobry and Tom Butler. Senator district, three-year terms, Steve Pierce and Dr. Richard Smith. And the school committee, another three years, Danielle London. So, congratulations on those people. For those who don't know me, I'm Bob Briggs. I was, as I said, elected moderator of the meeting open today. It's been customary to allow non-voters and non-resident taxpayers to speak at the meeting. Sound like you're making a motion out of it?
Second.
Second?
Yeah, I'm second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried. We will trust that people who are non-voters won't vote. That would be a bad idea. I'd like to welcome a guest today, Tom Simeon, a state senator. He lives somewhere.
In there here.
And Tom Schofield, a state representative. Well, without further ado, we'll break to the floor. With the announcement of the election results, that takes care of article two. Next article is to choose rules of order to conduct the meeting. The selectmen recommend using the main municipal association moderators. It's actually headed by the head. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a vote. Then, Article four, to see if the town will determine date taxes shall be due as September 30th, 2015, and the rate of interest to be charged on unpaid taxes of six percent per year. And the date such interest would commence is October 1st, 2015.
Second?
Will you, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Article five, to see if the town will authorize the selectmen to sell and dispose of any town-owned tax-acquired property on such terms as they deem advisable, and to execute release deeds in the name of the town for such property. Motion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a motion. It's carried. Article six, to see if the town will authorize the municipal officers to spend an amount not to exceed a quarter of the 2015 annual budget during the period from January 1st, 2016, to the March 2016 annual town meeting.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $136,000, $880,000 for officers' salaries, recommended by the budget committee.
Second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a motion carries. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $62,050 for town operating expenses, recommended by the budget committee.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $750 for assessing, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $74,222 for code enforcement, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? It's a motion carries. Article eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $90,739 for planning board expenses, recommended by the budget committee.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? Call for a vote. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $15,000 to continue to uplay the surface water management plan for the mountain village in there, and to accept other funding areas from Schubelof to complete this project. As an explanatory note, the Phase One inventory was completed, and this is to start Phase Two. Schubelof Corporation has committed $10,000 over two-year period, recommended by the planning board and the budget committee.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $8,950 for a selectmen's contingency fund to meet unanticipated expenses, contribution requests, and emergencies that arise during the fiscal year 2015, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $124,640 for police protection, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $113,000 for communications center operations, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $86,285 for fire department operating expenses, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article seventeen, recommended to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $28,746 for the fire department equipment reserve account, recommended by the budget committee. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $102,322 for ambulance service subsidy, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $7,283 for animal control, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $33,400 for town insurance policy coverages, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $50,290 for recreation department expenses and appropriations, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none? Our motion carries. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $210,359 for expenditures for the anti-gravity complex. And a note to the effect that their offsetting revenues are $31,600 and $72,000, for a total of $103,000, which will be requested in the warrant article fifty-nine, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All, hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $18,000 for recreation facilities as follows. Playground repairs and equipment replacement, $1,000. Town park capital improvements, $2,000. Narrow gauge pathway maintenance, $14,000. Outdoor center operations, $1,000. For a total of $18,000, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $22,000 for the JV and wing snowmobile club, the snowmobile trail grooming and maintenance, and see if the town will vote to appropriate the money received from the state for registration of snowmobiles, estimated $300, $300, to the JV and wing snowmobile club, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $25,000 for mountain bike trail development at the Oak Hill Center, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $35,000 to complete construction of the new pool. As an explanatory note, $500,000, including $100,000 in rent funding, was approved in 2014 for this project. It's estimated that the total cost of the project will be approximately $35,000. $535,000. We should have never done that. Additional matching recreational downwind fund, but the $10,000 is also being requested in warrant article twenty-nine, to match potential 2015 donations, to assist in paying for new pool-related equipment, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to name the new town pool in memory of Senator Wright, recommended by the board of selectmen and the recreation committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to implement the recommendation of the town's forest management plan for the town public lot, and to expend revenues received from the proceeds of the implementation, uh, of the, uh, proceeds of the implementation for costs associated with developing forest management plans, forest management activities, and maintenance of Oak Hill Center roads and trails. Note, to the extent that it's possible, it is intended to board swapping to reserve these funds for future Oak Hill Center trail bridge investment. It's recommended by the board of selectmen and the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to expend following amounts of recreation and downwind fund for the following purposes.
Can we just move the slate?
Moved and seconded. Has been moved.
Second? Total, one thirty-nine.
Total, one thirty-nine, nine seventy-nine. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $50,000 for replacement of the recreation and downwind reserve fund, board, uh, budget committee recommends.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to transfer revenues received from the self-tenant tower lease, portion of the town transfer station land, to the town's recreation and downwind fund. Note, once in place, the lease will generate $12,000 per year in income plus three percent a year, inflationary increases. The budget committee and board of selectmen recommend.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to delay action on that item until we take either positive or negative action on Article thirty-four. My intent would be that if the town votes in the positive for Article thirty-four, that we use those revenues from the lease of the self-site to cover the revenues lost from the rent paid by the childcare center.
Hey, can you make a motion for me?
That is a motion. Can you repeat the motion?
In second.
What our intent with this is that it goes into direct reserve account, and when it does come out, it's coming out as a two-for-one. So, there's $12,000 coming in, $24,000 coming out for future recreational projects in the community. At some point in time, we're going to need to address what you're suggesting for me is just a one-year piece.
Yeah, see where, see where that, you know, once it goes to recreational and downwind fund, there's virtually no other use for that, and it seems appropriate that where you have, we typically take that revenue from rent and offset taxes, that it would make sense to take that, that revenue from the self-tower lease to cover that expense for one, for yet, one year, to see where the childcare center.
Except for this year, we're not going to have the full $12,000 in the lease payments to the town on the self-tower.
That's correct.
So, it's going to be a shortage there.
Any further discussion on the motion just made? Hearing none?
On the amendment.
On the amendment to the motion. Would you say that again, then, boy?
The amendment is just to delay, delay action on this article until we've discussed and voted on Article thirty-four. It's just, just a delay of action, that's all it is. The minute of thirty-four is decided upon, we go back out and.
I disagree. Courtney, could you just say what you just said? The minute thirty-four is acted upon, what happens?
We just go back and take action on Article thirty-one. And then my, my intent, because if thirty-four is acted in the positive, my intent would be to make a motion on Article thirty-one, instead of putting it in a recreation reserve account, that it goes toward the operation of the community center and lost revenue from the childcare facility, operation that goes on in and out.
Your motion is to not vote on thirty-one, vote to thirty-four now?
That's correct.
You want, you want to change the order?
Well, that motion will be the table out of thirty-one.
It's not what he said.
Well, that's not what he said.
That's not, he said, that's a vice motion.
The motion to pick things out of order, uh, require two-thirds vote, just so you know.
What's the downside to taking it out of order?
I, I don't know. That's why I'm asking, because I don't know if there is, if you can take it out of order?
A two-thirds vote. Uh, just take a two-thirds vote. Good question. I'm not here to influence votes. If you decide to take it out of order, that's all you're doing is taking it out of order.
Any further discussion on Courtney's motion? Excuse me? Was there discussion just now?
I said, why not let it die now, why postpone it?
John, I guess we're, I'm confused about what you're discussing.
Well, they want to postpone.
Well, I think we're just going to go to thirty-four. And then back to thirty-one?
Yeah, go thirty-two, thirty-three, and then thirty-four, and then back to thirty-one.
All right, if there's no further discussion on Courtney's motion, then we'll vote on motion. Any, all in favor? All, any opposed? All right, now even that, the whole, raise them up, hold them. All in favor? How many did you get? Yeah. Okay? The yeses can put your hand down, and all, all those opposed, put them up, hold them. There are twenty-one in favor, twenty-five in both.
We're taking twenty-five.
So, the motion pays. Now we're back to the main motion. Which, just to remind you, was about the tower. Article thirty-one. Anybody need that right again? Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. All right, Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $49,413 for operation of the airbase and downwind program, recommended by the budget committee.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $28,528 for operation of the community center building, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to allow childcare day service provided by the nonprofit Western Main Center for Children to occupy the current space in the library slice community center building at no cost for the remainder of 2015. An explanatory note, for five years previous to January 2015, this organization has paid $1,000 per month around, and through the utility costs. The building and the town has previously budgeted $13,600 per year from these revenues to reduce the tax commitment. Western Main Center for Children is now unable to pay these expenses as they are projecting $101,268 in expenses, including the rent and utilities, and $86,080 of revenues for 2015. Now, the question for the voters is whether or not to allow this organization to continue to provide this service to the community center without paying rent or utility costs in 2015. The board of selectmen previously agreed to suspend rent and utility payments from January through April 2015, pending board approval at this town meeting. This has been recommended by the board of selectmen.
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $21,800 to operate the airport, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to transfer airport revenues collected in excess, in excess of the airport revenue budget, $100,000, into the airport reserve trust fund, recommended by the budget committee.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Any further, any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to accept federal aviation administration 90%, and state domain department of transportation, 5% grants, estimated per grant approximately $285,000 and $332,500, and to raise appropriate up to $12,500, and to expend all funding available in the town's airport and labor fund through 2015, this is estimated to be $6,000, as the town's 5% share of a project to design, permit, and construct an airport fuel station at the airport, recommended, board of selectmen, budget committee, and airport committee recommend approval.
So moved.
Second?
Been moved and seconded. Discussion, yes, please.
I'd like to propose amendment. Uh, there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not recreational vehicles and people that want to use ethanol-free gas for their, you know, equipment, like chainsaws and lawn mowers and stuff, and I've heard conflicting, you know, stories about whether it will be allowed, not allowed, whether FAA really likes this happening, yes, it's allowed at some airports and stuff. So what I think we should do is really put it in writing, amend the article, and if anybody's typing, I'll go slow. So after airport fuel station at the airport, that will be available to any and all who wish to buy the fuel, and that access with the machine or canisters to be fueled is guaranteed. Basically, that's just putting in writing what I've been hearing from people that they, you know, haven't really, you know, I haven't seen it in writing, so I think it's a good idea, because given the fact that there's less than twelve registered airplanes in town, the numbers of usage of the airport are sketchy at best. I mean, you hear all kinds of different numbers, you know, like a thousand landing on a good day, and, you know, one a year on a bad day. And I think that this ethanol-free gas is something that a lot, and high-octane, too, by the way, is something that a lot of recreational enthusiasts would like to use in their machines, their ATVs and their snowmobiles, plus, again, different things like lawn mowers, where you leave fuel in it over the winter sometimes. So, would you like me to reiterate the motion again, the amendment, or not? Or have you got it? Because I would like to go back, get to a point of.
Wendy, did you get it?
Um, I had most of it. If you would go from basically, um, to any and all who want to buy fuel, and then you said something about canisters. to any and all who want to buy fuel, and then you said something about canisters.
What's af, what is after to any and all who wished to buy fuel?
Anybody, oh, it's good, my understanding is...
What were the words?
Oh, after, uh, any and all who wished to buy the fuel, and that access with the machine or vessel to be fueled is guaranteed, because I'm just seeing down the road, um, if that FAA says, oh, there's too many snowmobiles coming in, fueling up here, or too many ATVs, and, and some pilots have, you know, it's a hassle. So it should be located, and there should be, uh, access to that, I think, granted, spending this kind of money, so, um, that's all.
Yes, sir.
I'll second it.
No, I think, you know, I think that is the intent, and, you know, I think all of us on the airport can agree with that, but as far as accepting a grant from the FAA and have that in writing, I think, I think that could cause problems with the grant.
I think it's important to understand that, number one, it's, it's a federal grant. Um, I, I know what your intent is, Bruce, um, there is no language that restricts access. In fact, we have gone through this process before at the airport, and we specifically have made sure that we don't have any fencing at the airport, because as you know, the airport is used for a lot of other recreational activity. And we have touched on that with other, other grants through the FAA, so we knew that we didn't have to have any fencing. We bought the land adjacent to the airport a couple of years ago, and specifically, I've talked to the snowmobile ATV club, and there's a very good access off the trail that they have to keep them off of the runway area, and so they can come in from behind. So the long answer to your question is, I don't know what the really intent is, we can't guarantee anything in life, but I, really, it's, it's a fuel farm, and I think that, um, to, uh, to take this article and to put specifics like that on it may have other intent, and my point being that it is not restricted from the public, that we have gone through great lengths to make sure the FAA does not want us to fence the airport. As you know, there's no gate on the driveway to get into the airport, and it's common, um, it's just no, normal knowledge that you're not gonna drive across the runway, we hope. So to attach that amendment to this article, I don't see any need for it, and I don't know what the real intent is, and I think that, you know, I see this going all the time at other airports, people come in with five gallon cans, people come in with, with their ATVs, it's a very common practice in Maine. We, unfortunately, are one of the few states that actually require ethanol, which is too bad. So, I just think that that's an added, an added burden to this article that does not need to be there.
But the article doesn't have to accompany the application of the...
Well, couldn't you, couldn't you simply say, amend the article to say, uh, act of public access, rather than identifying what, what the public access was? I think that, you know, again, I, I have to agree with Bruce that, you know, I as a taxpayer, and I as a major public safety official in this town, I would want access to that for all of our equipment, the fire department, whether it be chainsaws, generators, or whatever. Right now, we're buying canned fuel that's extremely expensive, because the stuff sits for long periods of time without use, and if any of you have had lawn mowers, or stringers, or chainsaws, or whatever, you've probably met Fred Nichols at Jordan's, and he's replaced carburetors. And, and we don't want, we want access to the ethanol as well as, you know, recreational users do, as well, so...
I agree with that, my point being, there is no restricted access, it's a public facility. So, who is gonna restrict your access? It's not gonna be the FAA, it's not gonna be the town, no one else can restrict your access. So, I, I understand that, I mean, our intent is that I, I, believe me, I really want the non-alcoholic gas there, and I think it adds another reason for people to come here to go snowmobiling, come here to go ATVing. More importantly, it also increases the safety of airplanes coming in and out, because weight is so critical in and out of here. Now they can purchase fuel here, instead of having to bring it in. So, that's, from the aviation standpoint, is very important, but again, I don't see any need for attaching something to an article that is very clean, and basically, there, you cannot restrict public access, that's part of any grant. So, again, I, I, I agree with you, that I want to be sure that we have all the access in the world, and that's why I've talked to the clubs to make sure they, that it's gonna really be nice to come off of that side trail, because we don't want people going up and down the airport. And, and when people come in with five gallon cans, as soon as you're driving the airport, the fuel farm's right there. So there's no way you're gonna be driving around on the, that was off here, that people are gonna be driving all over. But by having that trail behind now on the land that we own, there's no reason for the snowmobiles, ATVs to go out on the airport. So, I guess my feeling was, I don't want to have too much access, or too much, you know, people out on the runways, and this way, there won't be. So, again, I, I, I agree with you, I want to be sure we have access to it.
Well, again, there's been a fair amount of, you know, if you call misinformation on the street, and I know that, and some have suggested that we weren't gonna have access to it, where I know Rangelley and Nardswalk, there's access to their facilities.
Alright, just, let's, uh, I saw some other hands. Yeah, Dave?
Yeah, I just want to get a little clarification, um, you're right, Rangelley, I think Nardswalk does too, right, if I'm not mistaken, Nords, Nordswalk's access for everybody's behind a gate, but having said that, or they, or they, or they time it. First of all, I'm not saying this will happen, but if you get out of this road, and it ends up in the minutes of the meeting, this amendment was passed. These minutes get put into place with the application, they ask the minutes, they ask for warrant articles, the town's attorney reviews it, et cetera, et cetera. Not saying it will happen, but some bureaucrat, bureaucrat reads this down at the FAA and says, wait a minute, this isn't, you know, you're not supposed to be doing this in the first place. You know, you jeopardize the grant, I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but it is, it is a possible outcome. Uh, and then, the other issue is, and certainly everybody's, you know, expressed the intent, and I think it is the intent. I, there's no reason why you wouldn't have access for it, and each for all of your equipment and everything else, I just think that you want to be really careful with this. You, it's a, it's a sizable federal grant, and, you know, they go through all this stuff, so, I, I think it's, you know, worth a caution, I, I, who knows what's gonna happen ten years from now, you're right, if, if there's a new law passed, well, you know, that prohibits access, or all of a sudden, we have all kinds of problems there. What happens if we get a bunch of hoodlums down there, all hours of the night, what are we gonna do then, you know? So I think there are some, there are potential issues down there, I'm not saying there's gonna be, and clearly, it's the intent to allow the public to purchase this gas, and, and, uh, but I would, I would caution against putting it in the minutes of the meeting, jeopardizing the grant.
Yes, sir.
I, I think also as a practical matter, it's questionable whether anything we put in an article is gonna trump any action by anyone in the future, as far as if the Department of Homeland Security came and said, we have to restrict access for security reasons, or the FAA, or EPA, or whoever came in and said, you have to restrict access, I, I don't think we can point to our articles and say, well, no, look what we did here. I, I think practically, there's not, there wouldn't be much beneficial impact to expressing that, other than confirming that's what our intent is.
Alright, then, just to, Bruce?
Because the bill has six amendments, so, I just want you to stay, the intent is not to let the FAA know what we really want to happen there. I guess that's all, is that right? I don't know, I guess that's, that's... Well, I mean, is that, that's what I'm hearing here, we don't want to put it right, because we're afraid somebody, a bureaucrat's gonna, hey, these guys, they, they want to do this, we can't let that happen. So what you're saying is, it's really not, is it an allowed use under the FAA rules? I guess, if it is, then there's not an issue, and as far as having the wording in there, sure, homeland security, I'm convinced that eventually, there will be a fence around the airport. I could be wrong, but I, given the state of affairs in the world, and security issues and stuff, but if they come in and say that, fine, but at least I would expect with the word in here, our selectmen would at least make even a vain attempt to say, please don't do this to us, because, you know, if nothing else. It's not a big deal.
Alright, I'm a non-resident taxpayer of the town, and I'd just like to say something, I do a lot of snowmobiling, and I was over in Rangelley where along the side of the trail, some of the businesses have this easy access pump with high octane gas, very expensive high octane gas, I don't think we're gonna have this big a rush of people wanting to pay what the, uh, cost of the gas is for the aircraft, when just down the road, they'll be able to buy it a little, a lot cheaper. And, uh, I, I think this thing of thinking that there's gonna be a big lineup of snowmobiles and four wheelers lining up to buy gas there, I don't see it happening. I agree with the thing, I'd love to be using it when I put my sled away for the end of the year, buy a five gallon can of gas, I have some of the, you know, non ethanol gas to run my lawn mower, or a weed whacker, or a chainsaw, but I, it isn't gonna be a big rush, I don't think, of, of, uh, trail vehicles to swing in there and buy gas, I mean, that's just a point I'm gonna point out. Because I mean, they're spending a lot of money on the gas that they're buying, and I don't know what the price of aid gas is now, but I'm sure it's a lot more expensive than a regular gas company gas station.
Yes, sir, so a hand here?
Um, when I read through the proposal for the fuel farm, it appears that there's two specifically different types of gas that are gonna be sold, one which is aviation gas, and one which is a non-ethanol gas. Is that correct? Okay, so then...
Many also, small airplanes can use non-ethanol regular gas, which is cheaper than aviation gas, probably, in this area, probably half the fleet can use the, what we call motigas, mogas.
And that probably would be what people would buy for snowmobiles and chainsaws?
Correct, and then aviation grade fuel is a higher octane, but it contains lead.
So the fuel facility will be, well, the fueling will be in the same general location?
It will be contained, correct. I think I should just, uh, I should comment, because I do agree with Dave, that, that this, I think if you attach that amendment, you're basically saying no to the article, and I think you just need to know that, because this would be throwing out the baby with the bathwater, in my opinion. That if, if you need to feel like you need to attach that amendment, then just vote no on the original article, because that's basically what you'll be doing, and it's a very unique way Bruce brings it up. Um, so I, I would just say that we can just move the article, yes or no? That would be my comment.
Definitely, amendment first, boy.
Right.
And I, I still don't understand what you, what they're saying.
Bruce, we have others who want to comment on the amendment. You want to comment on the amendment, sir?
Yes.
Yeah.
As I understand the amendment, what we'd be doing is, uh, putting into the article, and into the regulation and structure, whatever you wanna call it, of this, that in essence, that gas is available to anybody, and everybody who wants to come and take it. And that we would be propitiding, uh, selectmen, or the airport committee, or anybody else, from ever putting any regulation on or controls. That's the way I understood the amendment.
Can I ask a question?
David?
Can I ask a question, because in most federal grants, there's clauses in there that talks about access, just like this facility, just like the pool, the tennis courts, park projects, there's gotta be a clause, if it's a federal grant, that says access at all times, when you sign off on those agreements. So, as stated earlier, is that the case?
You're not gonna say public access on airport property, you know, and I think that's, you know, part of the problem, that doesn't mean that everybody, you've heard it here tonight, we have every intention of providing the public with an opportunity to fill up with, with mogas, that's not the intent here. Uh, there's no, unless something comes along that restricts us from doing that down the road, uh, it's clearly the intent to allow that to happen. However, federal government's putting, FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration's putting money in this, because it's an airport, and it's an airport project. My opinion, the last thing you want to do is let them know that, oh, oh no, by the way, this is, this gas is for the snowmobile, in, in the general public, that's the problem with it. It, it, you're just, you're, you're adding, you're adding some language that somebody may see along the way, that would jeopardize this project. That's, that's the issue, it's not whether or not we're gonna allow access, we're gonna allow access. If, if we can, as long as we can, until we run into some regulation that says we can.
John?
I move the previous question. Second.
The question is removed. There's no further, there's no debate on that, so we have to tell that, taken care of, there's no debate on any other, of the other motions either. So, we'll, we'll vote on moving the question.
Is this moving the question or moving the amendment?
You, John, what is your intent, is moving the previous question?
Previous question is the amendment.
Is the amendment?
I move that we take a vote on that.
Well, first, we take a vote on whether... Alright, so just to make it clear what we're doing now, we're voting on whether or not to move the question?
No.
No.
We need...
I gotta vote to move the question first.
You have to vote on it, he's right.
You have to vote on that.
You have to vote on the amendment first, exactly, you know, you voted on it.
Vote on whether or not to move the question.
He wants to move the question, so we can vote on the question.
The first thing you do is to vote on whether or not to move the question.
Correct.
The second thing you do, if the vote is in the affirmative, is vote on the question. If, if the, if the motion to move the question fails, then you're back to discussion on the amendment.
That amendment was, motion is seconded, and we don't have to vote on that amendment first?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
Okay.
You first, but first, John has made a, John has moved the question. That's a motion, and that motion takes priority over any other motion right now. It has to be...
And it's non-reviable.
And it's non-reviable. Yeah, just to say it again, what we're about to vote on is whether or not to move the question. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, I hear no objections, so the question is removed, we now move, we might not proceed without further debate to vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment? Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay. We are back to the motion, the main motion, which is the article. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article thirty eight, to save the town a vote to raise appropriate sixty nine thousand dollars for maintenance of town buildings and grounds, recommended by the budget committee. Been moved in second, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a question, um, under town building and grounds, we run down over the list of things, under building repairs and maintenance, you actually have a budget of zero. It's gone from twenty five to twelve to seven to zero.
Hearing none, all for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 39, see if the town will vote to place state-of-the-main DOT highway fund as a $3,700 in the town's highway reserve fund for future highway projects, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 40, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $10,520 for the maintenance, repairs, and improvements to town buildings and grounds, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just a question, um, under town building and grounds, we run down over the list of things, under building repairs and maintenance, you actually have a budget of zero. It's gone from 25 to 12 to 7 to 0. And I just wondered, how can you maintain the town's buildings from zero budget?
Danny?
We were trying to balance the budget and keep expenses down, so, however, there is money. If you will look at article, there's a carry forward in article 56.
Okay.
Uh, great question, somebody picked up on it. About halfway down, you'll see there's $8,639 as a carryover being requested for the grounds and buildings.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 41, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $140,860 for transportation services, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 42, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $229,685 for solid waste disposal and recycling, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none? Oh, we're up there, I'm sorry.
I was saying, because of the town, considering the signage for the new dumpsters, at least on the mountain, I don't feel that they're being appropriately used. I think people are mixing up their recycling and their trash, and that we're not really addressing the recycling issue on the mountain. I think West Mountain is the one I've noticed most reasonably recently.
Any comment, Dave?
Uh, great observation, uh, because if you do look at the two canisters, sometimes you're not looking close enough, you really can't tell the difference, although there is some signage on the canisters.
It's small.
It's small. Uh, that, those, that service is a private service for the mountain, but having said that, we can, and I, I think you're absolutely right, we can ask the mountain if they could, uh, mountain property management, if they could perhaps, you know, can we do something different, and waste management, different with the signage on the two containers, because it is confusing to make sure that recycling's going recycling, waste is going waste. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 43, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $322,343 for obligated debt, and to see if the town will vote to accept and expend an additional $132,539 in payments for the sugar corporation as their contractual share of town debt service payments, and to accept and expand a private donation of $17,000 for the library community center debt, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 44, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $171,930 for employee benefits and employment.
So moved.
Recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Yes, sir.
Once again, just a question, when you run through the, the budgeting, there was some fairly sizable changes taking place in health insurance reimbursement, upward of income, self-funded unemployment. Did we, did we change the way we're doing our funding on those items, or why are the big changes from previous years to this year?
You agree with that, Dave?
Yeah, if you look on, what he, what Scott is referring to is page 42 in your town report, in the middle of the, page 42, um, the bottom line is, and, and if, all of this budget is in the town report, you can follow all of the, the budget for all of these articles, and that's obviously what Scott's been doing. Uh, if you look at, in the middle, what says employee benefits, we're proposing $171,930 this year and only $177,800 last year, so there's not a big difference. That difference is, we've reallocated a few things. Health insurance looks the same, the reason for that is we no longer, uh, at least for this year anyway, subsidizing a health reimbursement account. Complicated, but, uh, we got an increase in rates, health insurance. And what we did was, we are no longer having a health insurance reimbursement account for employees to help pick up coinsurance or deductibles, that's all gone away. So that we eliminated that, that was a bottom $5,000 deal, and we've eliminated it. And so it, it absorbed most of the increase, all of the increase in health insurance, so it made it possible to begin kind of keep the budget down and be somewhat realistic with health insurance benefits for employees. Uh, the other difference would be...
How did workman's comp go down so much?
Well...
I don't know, we just looked... 12 to 3500.
Yeah, I'm a little, I'm beginning to wonder. Um, if that adds up to that number, um, I feel pretty confident, that's supposed to be 13,500, and I have to add it up to see if it adds up to the 171.
That would make more sense.
And I believe it's...
I didn't add it, I just...
Well, I, that's a miss, that's a, that's a typo and a good pickup. Uh, I believe you'll find that's, you know, if you add the whole thing up, uh, these numbers right here, it should come out to that number. But I'm hopeful, hopefully it does, and if it doesn't, we're gonna have to do something wrong.
Our esteemed chairman, is there any doubt?
It should be 13, David.
Does it add up to 171 with the 13?
Yes.
Yeah, so the...
13.
Thank you, so the typo at, a good, good catch, the typo at 3500, the 3500 number is 13,500, but you're being asked to request the 171, 930 is the correct number. Thank you.
So just as far as that discussion is, it's a typo of the budgetary materials themselves, it does not affect the article at all. Any further discussion? All in favor?
I still don't follow, because it's, it's something like you were saying, health insurance reimbursement account would be dropped, but it's $24,000 higher, I don't understand.
I can see what's happened now, and, and they, they carried, that number, 20, is, is 20, that 25 should have been 12. Last year. Our apologies, and again, I've got to review these numbers in terms of how it was printed. I've got my budget right in front of me, and they're correct, and these are the numbers we put in the report to get printed, so I'm not sure. But the right number, it is the right number that's being requested to be appropriated at 171.
Any further, any further discussions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 45, see if the town will vote to raise, vote to raise appropriate $6,000 for the Flagstaff Area Business Association, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 46, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $7,200 for maintenance, uh, for maintenance of the information center, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 47, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $10,000 for skiing club scholarship grants, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 48, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $12,000 for the town scholarship fund, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 49, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate up to $800 for seasonal lighting.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 50, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $1,500 for maintenance, for maintenance and improvements to the cemetery, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 51, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $5,000 to be maxed by Sugar corporation for golf course reserve fund, and to authorize the board's selectmen to expend these funds for golf course improvements, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 52, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $1,000 for general assistance aid, recommended by the Budget Committee.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 53, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $2,000 to assist the Shiloh Area Ministry of, uh, Carabassett Valley Network Senior Committee in providing and all the services provided, and to encourage and engage the community to pursue long-term residency and independence in our area, providing daily telephone contacts and a web-based network of resources and services available, recommended by the Budget Committee.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 54, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate $2,000 for the construction of the new town sign, town event sign, where the mill, this funding approved with the $4,000 carry forward allowance requested in order of article 56, would be used to construct a mountain event sign to be located on 27th and the information center hall. The sign would include wood card lettering and interchangeable lettering to advertise events. Recommended by the Budget Committee.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 55, see if the town will vote to appropriate funds for motorbike, for maintenance and motorbikes, recommended by the board's selectmen.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 56, see if the town will vote to carry forward the following account balances, uh, to carry the following account balances forward, estimated balances as of December 31, 1914, and to expend these funds for said purposes.
I move the slate.
The slate has been moved, it's a total of $244,520.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 57, see if the town will vote to expend funds in excess of $1,500 from the mountain bike race that is generated to provide funding to the Carabassett Valley Mountain Bike Club for trail development and maintenance, where the mill, this funding is revenue from the annual mountain bike race that is sponsored by the town and managed by the club, recommended by the Budget Committee.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 58, see if the town will accept the categories of funds listed below and provided by the main state legislature. State revenue sharing, estimated in $10,000, street board reimbursement, $22,000, local group assistance program, $3,700, and vendors exemption reimbursement, $250, which will be $35,950.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 59, see if the town will vote to extend the following revenues from the following accounts to reduce the property tax burden.
I move this later, $462,410.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, the total is $462,410. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 60, see if the town will vote to authorize the board's selectmen to contract with Snowmobile Productions, operator of the WSKI TV channel 13, to expend up to 25% of town revenues received from cable TV franchise fees, and to provide a town of the Carabassett Valley marketing and promotion program on terms and conditions that would be deemed to be in the best interest of the town, recommended by the Budget Committee.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 61, see if the town will vote to authorize the board's selectmen to act the town to apply for, accept, and expand federal, state, and other sources of revenue for town purposes during fiscal year 2015. This does not include any monetary working batch the town may need for these grants.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Article 62, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board's selectmen to enter a long-term land lease for the Al, Alister Foundation to allow this nonprofit organization to lease approximately one and a half acres of town or land off the outdoor center access road to build and operate an adapted outdoor education center on such terms and conditions that the board's selectmen deem to be in the best interest of the town. The board's selectmen recommend approval. This land is a private, 2,000-acre acreage called the lot, uh, this state, also, this use of it also needs state-of-the-main legislative approval, which is currently being moved forward and anticipated to be approved. If approved by the state and the town, this will allow the organization to build the laws and provide recreational opportunities and associated services for clients with certain mental and physical disabilities.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That's the end of the published articles, uh, you need to address, I need to ask first the clerk whether all articles and any other business, if at all, been discussed. The answer is affirmative. Now, I'm motioning to...
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, then we adjourn. Any discussion? Actually, it's not a favor. Alright, thank you, Cole, very much for your...